Sure can.
Good, and do you see the Gray Wolf on your screen?
We do.
All right, then the most of the hard part is done then for us. So thanks for having us in tonight. We were originally supposed to have given our SIP on March 16th, the last day of school before the closure. So we did not, and we're here tonight and we're happy to, happy to present. So Donna Hudson and Jen Lopez, the two administrators at Gray Wolf Elementary School. And we would like to share with you our SIP plan for this year. We always like to start with some demographics. And so if you look at, uh oh, Gray Wolf by the numbers. Oh, there they are. We've been looking at it on a PDF, so I thought we had the wrong slide. So we have almost 600 students, 28 classroom teachers, four specialists, 20 parent educators, about 43% free and reduced lunch. We serve over 175 kids in our LAP program, Tier Two Reading Intervention. And we have 68 students on non-speech IEPs and 23 students on speech IEPs. We're a school-wide program, Title One program. And then we have 3.5 literacy and math coaches. You guys asked for some enrollment information. And these are the numbers that we have in each individual class this school year. We rolled those up and hope for a big enrollment in our kindergarten class. And that's how we come up with class planning for next year. Demographics also offered on the state report card. We are always interested in this. If you can see my clicker, the state says we're at 56.7% free and reduced low income. And so that's a discrepancy that we need to continue to really work to try and get the families in our schools to sign up for free and reduced lunches because so much benefit comes to the building around that area. We also have a high mobility rate and a high homeless rate. At one point this year, Gray Wolf had more students who qualified for McKinney-Vento services than I think any other building. So that's a unique thing to Gray Wolf. And we really work hard for our families who are under-resourced to help kids feel like they've got a home at Gray Wolf. So we also have demographic based on...
On race and gender.
Thank you. I just froze. So this is our demographics in another way, just looking at ethnicity. So we're going to move on and look at a review of last year's SIP, the things that went well, the things that did not go well that we need to continue to work on. And so really two areas that we pulled out. We had a successful SIP in 2018-19. Our teams worked to have written statements for each grade level's purpose, and they just found that to be really a conundrum. And so we were going to carry it over to this year, and then they decided that they didn't want to. And I think that's okay. They're just continuing to really hone in what does it mean to be a kindergarten teacher versus a fifth-grade teacher. So we're starting with some good conversations around that. I wouldn't be surprised to see it pop up on a SIP in the future. One of the things that we've had a huge success on, we are looking at grade level and instructional teams. We're always looking for ways for our teachers to have time away from kids to work on professional development. And we've historically been a school that releases our teachers once each trimester for a half-day to work on different curricular issues. Jen will talk a little bit later, and so will I, about an innovative thing we've done with our schedule. The collective bargaining agreement was changed last year to allow some flexibility in how planning time is used. And so at Gray Wolf, we've moved from a six-period day, which is sometimes hard to think about at an elementary level, but we moved from a six-period day to a seven-period day, which means that each of our classes is 45 minutes or teaching segments is 45 minutes long. This is important because it allows us to add one more teaching segment in the school day, and particularly around our specialists, because we tend to be a specialist lean. And so what it really does is it allows extra specialist classes, which help our specialists to have low class sizes and to meet the needs of 28 individual classes. What it also does is it gives a 45-minute flexible time for us on Friday because the teachers give up seven minutes, basically a day each day of the week, and we return that time to them on Friday. And what it allows is teachers to have 40 minutes of common grade-level time every single week. It also allows Mrs. Lopez, Mrs. McIlly and I to have our students every single week in a large assembly-style setting, which we'll talk a little bit about in a few minutes. But it's really given us some flexibility and some time with our kids.
Okay, some of the highlights this year at Gray Wolf. We had our Kids at Hope Week again. We'll talk about that in a minute. We had a kindness month where, in the month that's typically reserved for an anti-bullying month, we really pushed it out here as just kindness month because we would prefer to kind of have that message for our kids. We did our family STEM nights with the high school students again this year, which was a hit, just like last year. We did our annual food drive, our annual jog-a-thon. Every year, we also do our math night and dinner. The middle school students returned this year for Read Across America Day, which was a big thing for us. Our assemblies have changed, like Donna said, with our seven-period day. It gives us a 45-minute assembly window every single week. So we've been able to work all of our normal assembly programs into that time slot, which means we're not disrupting learning time at random days of the week, which has been great for learning. We've had lots of extracurricular clubs, and we have really pushed for an attendance initiative this week. So just like last week, we had a big Kids at Hope Week where each day of the week, we had community members and parents volunteer to talk about their hobbies, their careers, the way they serve the community. And then our staff did a Home and Family Day at the end of the week. This is a big highlight for our students because if you think about how kids learn about the things they want to do as adults, the things they'd like to be, they're sort of locked into either what their family members and friends do or what we can kind of expose them to. And so having Kids at Hope Week and bringing in all of these visitors is just a great way to kind of expand their horizons and give them options to think about that they may never have thought about before. For about our fifth year now, we have worked on our 12 Days of Giving food drive for the Squim Food Bank. We really want our kids to understand that it's important to give back to your community, and this is a really fun way for them to do it. We put out our annual calendar where for 12 days, we have the top highest need items from the food bank's wish list, and the kids bring the designated items on the certain days. And there's classroom competitions. It's very fun. But most of all, you know, we're focused on helping kids learn to give back. All of our assemblies that we did this year, I would say 95% of them were worked into that Friday morning 45-minute time. We had our PTA-supported several assemblies, Book at Theater. There was our Adventures in Music, Port Angeles Symphony presents each year several times. Lots of great things. Our Friday Focus assemblies are when we don't have something scheduled. We are able to take a look at our building needs that week. Let's say lunchtime has been rowdy. We can have on Friday a conversation with our students that's very timely about the concerns and kind of give them SDL coaching, ways to reinforce our building expectations. It's just, it's such a timely way to touch kids and get them on track. So we've really enjoyed that time. New at Gray Wolf.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about the seven-period day. So that is new, and it's a different way for our teachers to do their planning. It's been great for our specialists because we find that 45 minutes at the elementary level is much more appropriate for specialist time than when we're at 52 minutes. Just the ability of little kids to sit for 45 minutes and take in a lot of information. Our lunch schedule, this is probably the biggest change. Well, we've actually done about three really big changes this year. But the lunch for kids, the way kids would notice, the lunch schedule is a pretty big deal because we have gone to 20 minutes of seated lunchtime. And we've moved our recess to the 15 minutes before lunch. And so we've had some kind of cool things that have come out of that because our teachers now take our students out to lunch instead of our parent educators taking the kids to lunch, I'm sorry, to recess. We have almost no discipline at all out of recess because classroom teachers are with their grade level. It's just zero discipline. Kids have a lot more fun. There's no commingling of grade levels. And so then the kids come in and they've got about 10 minutes to get their lunch, and then 20 minutes of seated lunch. So it's really been a great thing for kids particularly. I think they get to eat a much slower pace, and they get, they're not rushing to throw their food away so they can go out and play. Our special ed model is really a big point of pride, I think, for us this year, just really working with our SPED staff. We have some high-need students and some Tier Three behaviors that we were finding our staff really exhausted by the end of the year. So we've changed our model so that our teachers rotate between two classrooms. And each of the teachers have a time in each program. And what we've found is that it's really invigorating for the teachers when we are having rough days, our teachers are in for two hours, and then they're out. They maybe go back in for an hour. It's been great for kids because they get three fresh starts a day. It's been great for staff because they know that they, if they can maintain the levels that they're working, they'll transition out of the classroom in about two hours. We've had really a luxury this year. We've added a reading coach, a literacy coach for three or five classrooms, and we've not had that in the past. And so that's been really some great literacy boost at third, fourth and fifth grade with both only, okay, with two things. One, kids getting some one-on-one literacy instruction from a specialist at three, four, five. But it's also been great for three, four, five teachers to have a thinking partner with a literacy coach. So we're improving Tier One services in every classroom with the addition of that coach.
And I would add to that that we have a really strong K1, two Reading Intervention program. And with our high mobility rate, though, getting students coming in later often, it's, we've noticed a great need to have that reading support in the higher grade levels because these aren't just Gray Wolf kids who've been with us for the first three years. And so typically, our Gray Wolf students that stick around and have had that high intervention when they need it do well. But the kids coming in, sometimes we need to give them a boost.
So Friday Focus, we've kind of talked to you about. It's been exciting. We were talking about hand washing and covering your cough long before the governor was. So we felt like we were really able to be intentional and get information out to kids really quickly. A new hires, and so we have great new hires in both our parent educator and our teacher ranks. You guys have had time to look at this, so we'll just move on. We at Gray Wolf are really about data, and we've got about seven or eight minutes. So we're going to hustle here. We're happy again at the state level. Our scores at Gray Wolf are above the state in all areas. That column to the right shows you the percentage point above the state we are. So we go from about 3.9 points in third grade ELA, clear up to 28.2 points above the state average in fifth grade math. And so student success and student growth are big points of intentional teaching at Gray Wolf. We want to talk a little bit about gaps and gaps by comparison. And so the first set of numbers with the yellow and blue, if you look at that, that is the highest performing group at Gray Wolf and the lowest performing group at Gray Wolf in that specific area. And so when you're looking at, now I've lost my train of thought. Our highest performing group, and this is an average of all grade levels, is our Hispanic Latino for ELA. And boys are our lowest, and there's about 15 points of gap between that area. But if you drop down to the state gap, the top in ELA is, in the state of Washington, is Asian at 77.9. The bottom gap is American Indian at 31.2. So the states' gap from their highest to lowest is 46.7% points. And so we feel really excited about our gap in ELA areas. Math, we're about 10%, the states at 51%. And that's again the gap between their highest achieving demographic and their lowest achieving demographic. Science, the same, about 17.9% at Gray Wolf, 41% at the state level. The very bottom demographics at the state and at the Gray Wolf, if you look at Hispanic success through our achievement, it's 42.4% at Gray Wolf. Now I will look up at the top, 74.1. So we're 31 points above the state demographic. For Hispanic, we're 3.8 above. For males, we're 26.9 above. For females, and you can go ahead and look at that. So, and that's in, if you look, there, they should be columns. So the first set Hispanic and male, that's ELA. The second group, female and Hispanic, that's for math. And the last group, females and Hispanic Latino, that's in the area of science. This is, you've probably seen this for all schools. This is the, I'm going to, so this is our overview. And so this is on a scale of 10. And you can see for the school year 2017 and 2018, we continue to be very successful on a scale of 1 to 10, with our low score being 9, our top score being 10. And we have 10 in several areas. We're particularly proud of math. Gray Wolf has really kind of become a math school. When you look at the regular attendance and the SQSS combined decile.
So the attendance is how many students, what percentage of our students are attending and missing two days or less each month. The SQSS combined decile was a conundrum to us. We looked it up. So what that is, is it's an average of our district attendance, the ninth grade on track to graduate, and dual credit. So not much of us is factored into that, but it does show up on our, on our report.
So it's another reason that attendance is a big issue for us this year because it's the one thing we can control that we can get better at. The interesting thing is that with the scores as high as ours are, we're just wondering why aren't we not getting some state awards for just overall achievement? And we found that you have to have a six or higher in all areas to be a school of achievement. So we feel like we're incredibly a school of achievement. We're very proud of our kids' hard work and our teachers' intentional teaching. But those are some questions that we had, and we'll share those with you. We want to show some three-year score. Yeah, all of the little dots in this story are a school building in the state of Washington. Our scores were up, it says, but our scores were actually up. We're on the top side of the line, .27 for the last three years. So we continue to grow as a school. This slide is from the new data mining system at the state called Tableau. And it's called the Unibrow. I didn't make it up. I'm circling right there. It's called the Unibrow. This is every single school building in the state of Washington on one continuous line of overall achievement. When you look at this, if you see where this little fingerprint is, that, their handprint, that is where Gray Wolf Elementary sits amongst every single building in the state of Washington for student growth and achievement over the last three years. So we're very pleased with this information. If you look at our ESD, and this again, every high school, middle school, elementary school in ESD 114. And that little black dot is Gray Wolf Elementary School at a 9.55 overall score. Again, the state says just over 50% low income with 16.5% special ed students. So that student growth, we are thrilled with, and it's something we really pride ourselves on as far as data is concerned. Improvements and future needs, so this year's SIP plan for you.
We're starting with attendance. We did not love on the report card to have attendance be at a five and not higher. It was reflective of the slight drop in attendance from the years prior. And so we decided to tackle that as an initiative. So several things that we have done. For starters, we started putting a board out in front of the school each day that talks about the attendance from the day prior, the percentage of students that were there by grade level. And so it became kind of a bit of a competition for kids. You know, they didn't want to be the lowest one. They wanted to be the highest one. They wanted to get to 100. We'd say how many tardies there were because tardies, while it's not reflected in the attendance data, it does impact student learning. And so we wanted to be sure to encourage students to come to school on time. So we would post that out front of the school before school, and we'd move it to our Looper Lane after school. So parents drop off kids, and parents who walk their kids in, both would get a chance to see it. The second thing we did is we started an extra recess initiative, which is the language of elementary school children. So we cut out the words recess, and we posted them all sideways on every door frame of every classroom. And for every morning that in the classroom were present on time, we would flip a letter for the word recess. And once their whole word recess was flipped, the class earned an extra recess. And that was incredibly motivating for young people. We are excited to get our actual number, but we are, we know for a fact at this point that when school ended, the average was over 90%. So we're excited to do that.
I'm going to have to hustle. So challenges. At Gray Wolf, you know, we were built for about 450 students. We're still closer to 600 than 500, and so space will always be an issue for us. We've talked about technology, laptops. We've closed our computer labs. Those are all reclaimed for classrooms. Our gymnasium is a very small gymnasium. If you look at the picture here, this is a school assembly, a Friday Focus assembly, and that's without our kindergarten students. So it's very hard for us even to get our kiddos all together in one area. So we all know space is in need at Gray Wolf. We'd like to start, share with you this year's SIP plan, which was, of course, stopped midstream by the pandemic. But we still have done a lot of work for this year's SIP, so we'll quickly run through it for you.
Okay, so the first thing with attendance, which we covered. The second big thing was the PBIS three-tier classroom management and student discipline model. So we are fortunate enough to have 10 staff members attend the PBIS conference this year. There, we had another 10 slated to attend the MTSS conference in May, but that turned into a virtual conference just this last week. And we had over 20 staff members attend that online, which was fabulous. We've held professional development sessions. And right now, the current phase that we're in is teachers are completing a survey on their classroom convention that they use, which we're bringing the district discipline committee. So we have been working hard on that.
Okay, so our last three. So we bought a new CKLA program for ELA two years ago. We felt like we maybe weren't using the writing studio as much as we'd like to. So this year, we made a concerted effort. We've done PD for our teachers. We've done a survey to see who was using it, who wasn't. And so this was something that was kind of our next phase. We had, we were well underway, but kind of stopped by the arrested school year. A big thing that was a focus this year that will absolutely be a focus next year is a focus on small group instruction. This year, we felt that we could be even more intentional in our small groups and closing those gaps for individual learners. And next year, with the lack of school this spring, that's really going to become a huge issue because we're going to have to really find ways to close gaps with kids who had great reading or schoolwork instruction at home and kids that it was more of a struggle for. So I feel like we'll probably really pull the 2019-20 SIP straight across into the 2021 school year because they're really great things that we have been working on. And I think that there are things that will need to be continued. The last thing that is on our SIP is this, the compilation of a classroom data book. We started this about two years ago and basically asked our teachers to look at assessments through the school year, pull that assessment into an assessment notebook that they keep within their classroom. That allows Jen and myself, as we're in classes, we can pull their data book. We can look at assessments. We can see student growth. We can look at their messy data for their student growth goals. We look at incremental reading improvement or math unit improvement. And it really helps us. It's kind of one of those things, you improve the things that you're looking for. And so we're looking at student growth and individual student learning data a lot. Those books are great for teachers because it really helps them focus on their data. It's great for us because it's a one-stop shop to go in and see how the classroom is doing, how each teacher's students are doing academically from two points in time. So again, I think we'll pull this right through to next year. They're great goals. They're goals that we're finding good traction on. I think they're really important goals for the kids that we have in our building this year or don't have anymore, but have in our, in our school this year and will have again next year. So that is going to be it for our SIP plan. We are fast talkers, so hopefully it made a lot of sense to you. But we're trying to really keep it short enough to not take your whole night, but give enough input that it really benefits you or you get a good sense of Gray Wolf and the things that we do out here. So we're happy for questions if you have any.
Wow, thank, thank you, Donna, Jen. Really appreciate it. You guys are rock stars over there at Gray Wolf as usual. And thanks for the great presentation. So I will ask some other board members if they have anything. So we'll start with Director Ku.
All right. Thank you, sir. Great presentation, and frankly, good to hear your voices as we've been in isolation. And actually, just a comment there, just a testimony to anyone listening in is my gratitude for the world and the work continuing during this unprecedented time. So your presentation is reflective of that and the fact that, I'm not surprised, but you're engaged looking at not only our current situation, but what's coming down the pike. So thank you more than ever for being where you are and doing what you're doing. A question I had had to do with the free and reduced lunch trends. And I have lost track of the ball from previous years. But can you describe what those have been? And you mentioned the discrepancy. And of course, where my mind goes, selfishly motivated, is what, what kind of funding is in play according to, you know, what our levels are at?
Well, Director Ku, I think that's a great question. And there's a difference between low income and free and reduced, and it's paperwork. And so we, for the last five or six years, have been just everywhere around 50%. Our highest was 49.9% three years ago. And it's, it's just a kind of upward hill that schools have to do in trying to get families to do paperwork in order to qualify for those state monies. And I mean, it could be anywhere from $80,000 to $150,000 that can come into a building for targeted gap-closing instruction in the, you know, because of high or low income money. So it's something that is kind of, I suppose, in my educational career, it's my, it's what haunts me, trying to figure out how we get our kiddos qualified so that that turns into more staffing and more support here at Gray Wolf.
Great, thank you. And that did sound familiar with what I recall, so I'm not completely off-base. And I guess the other question too would be, and I'm interested to hear questions from my colleagues, but just, I'd be remiss not to ask you any perspective as a professional CEO of a building, you know, what your perspective is on the staff reduction measures that the board is discussing tonight? And the correlation between my, my perspective that feels like Gray Wolf is bursting at the seams?
Yeah, I mean, I, I respect the district's need to be a positive business model. So I appreciate what has to be done. Obviously, from a stakeholder in a building, we have worked hard to get great staff and retain the right people. For me, it's always about the right people on the right seats in our bus. And so we have, we have important programs that we've fought for and that we've used our allocation for to meet the needs of our kids. And so obviously, when you hear about losing staff members, it's, it's not what any principal wants to hear. You know, that being said, we, it's a team, and we all have to do what we can do for the good of the district. I'm hoping Dr. Clark is right and that things are not, hopefully, don't come out to be as bad as we think they are. But we're making plans to, looking at our program. looking at our programs. So when cuts come, we have to decide, um, you know, we're always going to put kids first at Gray Wolf and the decisions we make will be done around that. What, what can we do that still gives, uh, students the support that they need to be successful?
And I would add to that, um, something we kind of glossed over and didn't really go deep on, but is in line with what you're talking here. Donna is an incredibly creative thinker when it comes to staffing and allocations. So in light of our seven period day, we were able to recoup some, some staffing for specialists. So we, we needed to hire fewer specialists to take on all the children that we have. In addition to that, by doing the seven period day and, and giving teachers that common planning time each week, that was building budget money saved that was traditionally spent on half day release times. So I, I would credit Donna with looking at our staffing, looking at our budgets and, and always finding the best way to use what we have, um, to serve our children the best.
Great. Thank you. No other questions right now?
Yep. Thank, thank you, uh, Director Jeffries.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was nice to hear, uh, positive upbeat news about the schools. What's been going on? It, uh, it's nice to hear what you were and are doing for the, uh, for your, for yourselves, for the staff, for the kids and for the parents of, uh, Gray Wolf. It's pretty amazing and the results have been fantastic. I really appreciate and, uh, your creativity and, uh, trying to solve problems. And it looks like you have quite a bit of staff buy-in to make it, make it work. And, um, I think you've got some really good things going on there. Uh, hopefully, um, you're, as you mentioned, you might be in a better situation going into whatever might come next year than you would have been had you not been so creative. Some of the things concerned, uh, how, during the closure here, how are things going with, um, online school, schooling, packet schooling, contacting parents? Are you being successful? Do you have some concerns on, um, reaching out to kids and having them, uh, get involved in education right now?
Well, I, oh, if I would have, um, been asked the question yesterday, I may have a different opinion than I have today. We had, uh, the first day of our packet pickup, uh, for our second round of packets, which just to clarify for anyone, uh, who may be listening, uh, we're a hundred percent, uh, paper pencil packets. Uh, we have, uh, options for online supports, but those are in addition to our basic, uh, ed packet is, uh, that kind of the meat and potatoes packet is all paper pencil, uh, which we hope makes it much more accessible to all of our students. Um, it, one of the big problems is, uh, Director, we're not hearing from, uh, a lot of our families. Uh, but today on the first day of our packet pickup, we had, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six classes accounted for. We had over two hundred packets picked up. Uh, and we saw a lot of, uh, kids that teachers are not hearing from the parents. There's not that reciprocal communication. Uh, but they came and picked up packets today. So we believe they're getting, uh, information that teachers are sending out. They're getting our emails. And they're maybe not answering us back, but they're certainly receiving that information. We saw a lot of happy kids in the backseats of cars today, uh, having a chance to see their teachers. We saw a lot of happy staff members having a chance to see some kiddos. Uh, so I feel like we're, uh, doing really everything we can. We're trying to improve. Uh, we're, we're, uh, have moved all to Class Dojo. Uh, now within the building, which is just one platform that allows, uh, parents with multiple kids to log in to one place. And that is a online, uh, program, but, um, we've sent everything that the kids need to be successful home and we received a lot of work back from kids today. Uh, so we were really, um, I feel happy about, uh, what happened today and we look forward. We've got four, uh, three more pickups, uh, this week, three more days. We've, uh, tried to be, uh, responsible, uh, socially. So we've just, uh, set up one teacher per hour. Uh, so we want to have about twenty-five, uh, kids in that hour and keep, uh, just keep our distance and let families come through and, and feel, uh, a little safer that way. So, uh, obviously we would rather be in school. We would rather, uh, see our kiddos every day. Uh, our teachers are just, uh, sad, sad people not to be able to teach the kids. And, uh, and yet I think we're doing, uh, good things for kids, uh, in, at Gray Wolf Elementary.
And the guidance from the state has been very clear that in addition to obviously reaching out to families for academics, they really want us, um, reaching out for social emotional things, making connections, keeping the connections with our students and their families. So we've also done, we started a Gray Wolf Facebook page. Um, and we've been doing a nightly, every night at seven PM bedtime story that's read by a staff member, um, from our school. And the ideas that kids are getting on with their families, excited to see, you know, which of their adults might be reading to them tonight. Um, we also are doing that to kind of keep the idea that routine's important, bedtime's important, all the things that are good for kids during this time. And so we've been working on that. We created a, a video from our staff, um, to our students, which was shared on our Facebook page and also pushed out by teachers on their Class Dojo pages. And it was just, um, the kids at hope message and a message of missing them. Uh, we just need to keep those connections so that we, kids have some hope. They're ready to come back to us in the fall and we get them all back.
Yeah, that sounds good. I guess some of the concerns I have too, or maybe you have also, I'm sure, is packets are great, but that in-class time face-to-face with the teacher and the student is so important. And we're going to have kids out, not in the classroom, March, April, May, June, July, August. So there are some subject areas, reading, math, well, all, all, all the subject areas where there's going to be a significant, um, I heard it described as a slide. I'm not sure that where, where their skills just aren't where they should be or where they would have been.
Yeah, I agree with you. That this is the heavy lifting time. Uh, this is where our, our, um, the, the pre-work we do in, uh, September, October, November, December, this is where kids really make big, uh, growth academically. So absolutely, I don't want to for one second say, oh, I think packets are good. Packets are not good. Packets are not teachers. And that the socialization that kiddos get, the, just the, you know, we know, uh, that the, like domestic violence in Crown County is up by twenty-five percent. We know if you watch the news, alcohol sales are up by three hundred percent. And that's not great for children. Our families are doing the best they can do, but we have a lot of concern about our kiddos not being in school. It's why I, I mean, to answer, uh, Brian's, uh, question, it will be difficult with reduced staffing to come back and meet the needs that our kids will have because clearly it'll be six months, uh, since they've been in school. So I, I don't want you to think for a second that I don't think that's a grave situation for our kids and for our school. We're, we're going to have to be, uh, so intentional and, and so focused to bring kids back into school after a six-month, um, absence and get our system back up and running. So I, absolutely, I think that it's, uh, devastating to children. I think it's hard on our staff. Uh, public schools are public and kids, they need kids in their buildings to, to really function well. So.
Well, if anybody's going to do it, I think the staff and students at Gray Wolf are going to be successful. It's going to be a lot of hard work. I drive by your school when I'm out and about just about all the time because you're on my way to and from home. So, um, good luck to you and whatever we can do to help you out, let us know.
Very appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Uh, moving on quickly to, uh, Director Stauffer.
Hi. Um, again, thank you, uh, Principal Hudson and Jennifer for all this, uh, this extremely, uh, your efforts. And, uh, I too, on a almost semi-daily basis, I'm out there at Gray Wolf because I'm, was delivering, uh, personal protective gear to the fire department's site there. And miss seeing the kiddos out on the playground type thing. The only, um, question that I have, it, it's back to the free and reduced lunch rate and the low income. Now I know that the free and reduced lunch rate is by the, uh, paperwork that gets submitted. And where are we getting the low income percentage? And that's where, where can we work to, uh, connect those two to close that gap? So, because it is definitely, uh, would result in, uh, um, additional funding for our needs. And can you help me with that?
Yeah, not necessarily. I mean, OSPI has an algorithm. Uh, we don't furnish that information to OSPI. Uh, they have an algorithm. I'm sure it's based on property taxes and rentals and other things that OSPI has access to that we don't have access to. Uh, what I know is that every year we make it a, um, uh, point of, uh, intentionality. And every year we just are, are right all around it and can't quite, uh, hit that lever. So, um, Dr. Clark may be able to give you more information or Darlene may, uh, we every year really push and every year we're just, um, just a, just that far from, uh, hitting fifty percent.
The only thing that I would add to what Donna just said is some of that is census data.
Yes, and, uh, with the census kind of going on right now, um, and there's still a window for people to, to report. And so it, it would probably be another area to include or encourage our families to, uh, have they participated in the census? And I can't remember the window now when it closes, but it, uh, I think there was an extension on it. Otherwise, um, I, um, echo my colleagues' comments and, uh, thank you so much for what you're doing. And, uh, it is excellent to hear your voices and, uh, take good care and wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, thank you guys too for what you're doing. I know that, uh, some weeks are tougher weeks to be a school board member than others and we appreciate it and we know you'll do, uh, what's best for our kids.
Thank you.
All right. Director Pickens, anything to add?
Um, just, uh, just a few items real quick, um, uh, or actually more just a question. Did, I want to make sure I heard you correct. Did you say that, um, you have, uh, in your schedule, you've been able to get a, all of your students go to, to recess prior to lunch? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is phenomenal. I am so happy to hear that. That's something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been, you know, that I think the studies on that are, 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 are quite convincing about the benefit for kids. So, um, I think that's just amazing work there and I think it's important as well. So, um, as, uh, certainly as an, as, as an elementary teacher, I can, I can, um, certainly see that, see the benefits of that. And, um, I think, um, what you're doing on Fridays with the grade level collaboration and all that are just, just phenomenal steps in the right direction. So, uh, um, I think that's, that's great and I'm glad that folks were able to see some of the, uh, some of the students today with, with picking things up. My, my, my daughter who was, uh, o- over at Helen Holler, she, she also went and saw her teacher and she's, she'd been talking about it for a couple of days leading up to the pickup of materials. So I know that it's just so, uh, so impactful for the students, even just to get a, have a brief conversation, even if it's out a window with the, with the, the educators there at the school. So, um, phenomenal work, uh, and, um, especially during these times. So, uh, appreciate all of your, all of your efforts.
Great. Again, thank you very much.
Great. And, and just, uh, last words, uh, thanks, Donna Jen for, I really appreciate it. Uh, you know, as I said before, you guys are rock stars over there and, and appreciate all the work. I, I really like the, uh, the, the forward thinking with the seven periods and, and that direction. I know that's some conversations that, uh, I've asked just moving forward with our high school and some of the other classes, uh, grades to do that kind of stuff. And I got to say probably with the current conditions that were under my favorite pictures in that old presentation was, were the ones that had everybody gathered together because we're, we don't have that opportunity right now. It was good to see their smiling faces and with the parents and the teachers and all. And, uh, again, thanks for all you're doing and, uh, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Just real quick before we, before you get out of here, Donna, Jen, hey, I want to thank you for what you're doing, what you've done for kids and what you continue to do for kids. Just to ditto and, uh, supplement what the board member said, what you're, what you're doing is extraordinary, noble, meritorious. The, the adjectives keep flowing and thank you very much. Again, proud to be working with both of you. Thank you.
You, we love what we do.
Okay, moving on, we've got, uh, a little bit of business to do and, and just a pre, another reminder out there. Uh, make sure we had a couple of mics that were on from a guest. Uh, so just making sure that your microphone is a little line through it there. And, um, and also, uh, just, uh, maintaining our, uh, video off unless we're talking kind of helps with, uh, the bandwidth for, uh, this kind of a conversation as well for the other board members also. Um, so moving forward, uh, next up we have our, uh, approval of our, uh, of our minutes from the thirteenth. Uh, so I looking for a motion?
Chair, this is.
All right. Sounds like we have a motion from Director Stauffer and a, uh, second from, uh, Director Ku. Somewhere we'll, we'll call it that.
Sounds good.
Any discussion? And hearing none at this time, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Moving on, do we, any changes or additions to our agenda?
No.
So hearing none.
Mr. Chair, move.
Yes.
To approve as presented. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. All right. So, uh, we, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second, sorry.
All right. We have a approval and a, or a motion to second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Sign? Okay. And moving on. Where are we at here? Trying to operate on two screens. I can't find my cursor.
Mr. Chair, I've held you a long, uh, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
I will, uh, second.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we've got, uh, obviously a few friends leaving the district and, um, however most appropriate, if we have an opportunity to, uh, honor them for their service to the district, that'd be great. I understand we're under unique circumstances. So, uh, you know, specifically call out Principal Willis. Um, and wish him well in his retirement and, uh, to the others, thank you for being a part of the Skim School District family for the time they were with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Okay. And as we mentioned last time, we have our, uh, student reps that we missed very much, but, um, we will, uh, we're not, we don't have them with us. They've been excused. And just a reminder, uh, again, we're not ta- taking oral public comments. If anyone has any comments or any questions, they're free to, uh, send those into the district and we'll, we'll review those in the future. Uh, and then, uh, next up, we'll just have regular board communication, uh, starting with Director Ku.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, actually I just wanted to start off by thanking you, uh, Director Gibson, for your handling of the concern that we got from the senior parent call. Um, I had a chance not only to receive the email, but, uh, had a one-on-one discussion, uh, with Director Gibson and I appreciated you jumping on that, um, perils of the technology. And I've been there before, maybe not to the same degree. Um, so thank you for handling that with professionalism. And, um, at the risk of looking like I'm trying to butter up my peers, uh, I've mentioned this to him separately, but, uh, really appreciate having Director Jeffries and Director Pickens on the board right now as we're working through some extremely difficult conversations regarding staff reductions. Um, so just a note that, um, I really value, uh, that perspective being at the table, uh, can otherwise kind of consider it a blind side of mine. So, um, gentlemen, thank you and thank you for engaging on this. Um, another thing to bring to the board's attention, uh, many folks may know that there is a coordinated effort underway. that there is a coordinated effort underway to seek to repeal Senate Bill 5395. This is the comprehensive sexual education bill, referendum 90. Um, I have mixed feelings about it, but, uh, this board has heard my concerns about the bill. And, uh, I think we, um, moving forward can, uh, do a lot better as a board, uh, to engage on these types of topics. So really just encourage us all to pay attention to this and engage as appropriate. And just a reminder that, uh, not, it is not a good time for passive governance. Uh, there's a lot of strong opinions in the mix. And, um, as we're talking about what may be, um, contributing to attrition in the district, um, something to be mindful of. And Director Gibson, uh, we can punt to offline if you prefer. Obviously, I recognize that, um, our world changed, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But, uh, just for the sake of keeping it in front of us, uh, just any thoughts on, uh, fact finding, uh, as a board for our consideration of joining the lawsuit against, uh, DNR? And then, um, just finally, I think, I don't know if everyone's, uh, a part of this, but I've been enjoying it. Uh, there's a grassroots effort underway for adopting a, a senior in Squim, uh, which kind of mirrors a national effort that somebody kicked off. And so if you haven't done it already, I encourage you to check it out. It's kind of fun to throw a little love at, uh, some of our senior students. Um, Director, or I'm sorry Superintendent Clark, getting titles mixed up. My only concern, and this certainly isn't, uh, you know, anything to toss on, um, your workload, but is, you know, what students may not be, um, you know, may not be showcased or we may be collectively missing. Now, I recognize that this is not a school effort. This is not, um, you know, property of the Squim School District. Um, but when I was talking to, uh, a Becca Bar family member, that was something that, um, was just weighing on my heart and mind is, you know, the students that may be, uh, not recognized just because they may not have the resources at home or, um, you know, parents have time to do that. So, just a thought.
Speaking of the adopt a senior program, is that what you're speaking directly to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, I can look into that. And upfront, I know that my wife's been involved in it and I know we've adopted a senior and I'll look into it in bigger detail and see if there's any kids who are, who have not or the number of kids who have not been adopted. Linda has been involved in that.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, obviously with Director Gibson's blessing, I'm happy to help in any way if I can. But, uh, it was just a thought I wanted to share. So, thank you. No other comments.
Yeah, and thanks for that, uh, Director Koo. I've, I've been following that page a bit myself. I think a lot of us have. And, uh, I know I was working, uh, talking with, uh, some of the parents, chatting with them on that page the other day, just trying to figure out our, our numbers of, uh, how many students, it looks like we have about 201, 205 seniors at this time. And they were trying to track how many were act, so there's, there is some activity, at least trying to look at what the numbers are, uh, regarding that. Um, I don't know where it stands at this time, but, but I know that the team that's working that is, um, uh, looking at those numbers for sure. Uh, moving on, we'll have, uh, Director Jeffries.
Thank you. Not much to, um, add some of my earlier comments. Um, I do have concerns about how we're going to move forward and what school is going to look like next year. And I encourage Dr. Clark and his task force to follow that and keep us updated and, um, informed sometimes, um, well, to be honest, you know, I feel out of the loop sometimes because I know there's so many things going on. And, um, it's, uh, any feedback you can give us and updates would be greatly appreciated. These changes, you know, the, what's going on with the crisis right now and what we've had to do immediately. And that what ripple effects, what's it going to look like in the next couple of years are, um, on my mind. Um, I really do appreciate the WASDA. They have a tele networking conference, um, twice a week actually, with, um, school board directors, OSPI administrators from all over the state. Uh, the two sessions are usually fairly similar, but actually quite a bit different because they get different questions. And it was nice to, um, to hear what the others are going through, some of the similar things we are. I did ask a question about executive session today and how that's done or how districts may have done it. They addressed it a little bit. Um, in case we need to go to an executive session, it's possible, yeah, to be done. But, uh, we just have to make sure we're, um, following along on all that. So, um, and then, uh, other than that, it's just, um, hanging in there and listening to, uh, what's going on. I have a personal feeling that this is going to go on for quite a while in one form or another. And, um, it's, um, very frustrating and confusing and complex all at the same time. And that's why I really appreciated that upbeat, upbeat report we got from Greg Wolf. So, I know our staff doing, um, working really hard and, uh, you know, anything we can do to help them out. Again, um, let it go. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Larry. Uh, Director Stauffer?
Yes, thank you. I will, uh, echo Larry's comments on the WASDA meetings. Those are, uh, very helpful, very informative, uh, to, uh, keep abreast and attract of the, uh, latest and greatest because they're tied in directly with OSPI and the, and the other ASB. A, uh, the other, uh, um, ABC working groups out there. And so it's, uh, very helpful to, to hear all that dialogue. Um, one of the things I, that comes to mind is that they were really emphasizing that, uh, that our work right now be, um, the necessary and routine and then not taking any action, not, uh, doing any new policy changes. Uh, it's, our work should be, uh, focused on, uh, the response to, uh, the virus and, and, uh, and then getting our kids through school. And that was, uh, one of the strongest, uh, statements that came out of today's meeting. I also, and Director Gibson, I think you got this email too because it went to the, all the board presidents and all the board legislative reps. And WASDA is standing up a student advocate suicide prevention work group to carry out the vision of, uh, House Bill 2589, which was legislation that passed this last session. And this work group is a way to promote student voice and develop an implementation plan that informs strategies on the bills, suicide prevention and awareness efforts in schools. So I just want to make sure we get this out to our student reps or, uh, any of our other students that would like to participate. And there's a, a list of dates, May 18th, June 1st and June 15th. And, uh, if we could get that out to our student reps, that would, would appreciate that. And then on the, uh, the adopt a senior and those procedures are, are that program that's out there, it's, it's real important to make sure that we are reaching all of our students. That there's, that's where I look at things through that equal lens and equally. Because I, I just want to make sure that, uh, there is this process in place. And I've had some conversations with some senior parents that are in, uh, my circle of friends and, um, in which they emphasize that they are working diligently towards that. And so I, I have faith and confidence they will. And, and we just leave, uh, let the senior parents manage that. And, uh, I'm pretty sure they'll do great things. And I'm really missing the flamingos right now because right now the flamingos from the, the senior class would be hitting our yards because, uh, and, uh, we'd all get to, uh, um, bid on them and then that would support that grad party. But otherwise, that's all I have. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Clark, again for your work and staff. So I have, thank you.
Thank Jim. Uh, Director Pickens?
Thank you. Um, just really echoing some of the other things that were, were, were said already. Um, yeah, I appreciate the WASDA calls. Um, does, it does look like maybe there's some, some federal funds that are, that are coming. I think they've brought up, so I'll, although nothing specific. I know we're going to be watching that very closely to, to, especially given our, our current situation. So I'm hoping for a positive impact there. Um, and just, um, our, our, our staff out there. I mean, just an amazing amount of work in a quick period of time. I know I said this last meeting, but I, I really can't reiterate it enough. Um, you know, it's a, uh, it's an environment that none of us could anticipate. And we have, we have staff that are, um, trying to do whatever they can to make connections with, uh, with the students. And, um, and using new platforms that, that haven't been used before and, and trying to make those connections and, um, administrators as well. Things are, things are in constant flux and getting new, new grading guidelines and new, all, all, all sorts of, uh, changes. And I, um, one of the things that I, I think I have the, that a lot of concerns about is, um, and I think Director Jeffries had sort of, um, talked, spoke about this as well. Um, is as we, even though we don't know what fall is going to look like yet, um, next year, what we do know is that there are going to be significant, um, gaps there. And there's, it's, we face a, a, a very steep, uh, hill to climb. And, uh, you know, it's, we're going to have to ho- hopefully have, have all hands on deck to, to, to get that work done. But, um, I think, um, the sooner we start, start thinking about how we're going to fill that in, the better. And I, you know, that's, I think, why I, I, I get very concerned with, with talking about, you know, the different staff, the staffing situation that we have as well. So I want to make sure that we're, um, considering how, how the fall is going to look, even though we don't know how it will look, we do know that the work is going to be there. So, um, but again, um, hats off to the fellow educators, um, and, and, um, every, all the staff for, for doing what they're doing. So, that's all for me.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, and, uh, not much really to add there. Just, uh, appreciate, you know, back at to all the staff that are, that are just working hard to try to figure out the best way to connect with and, and, uh, uh, work with our students, uh, on a day-to-day basis. And, and as, you know, we heard in our earlier presentation, it's not the, uh, definitely, you know, packets and, and online learning are, are, are not the ultimate, um, option. And, uh, but that's a situation that we're stuck with at this time. And just again, really appreciate all the staff and the work they're doing to make sure that that does happen, that learning is still continuing and, and, uh, you know, we'll cross that barrier when the new year comes to see where, where we're at. Uh, uh, thanks for bringing up the flamingos there, Director Stauffer. I know I was just looking out my window the other day and thinking, oh, man, they should be flying in here. It's about that time of year and, and, uh, not seeing them. So, uh, that is a little, um, heartbreaking as well. And, uh, but, you know, everything we can do to support, you know, support our students and, and, uh, and then also, you know, the conversation about the adopt a senior. Um, and, uh, well, how we can, how we can work to get as many as them, if not all of them, incorporated into that. Really appreciate, appreciate all that. Uh, so, uh, thanks again. And, uh, that's all that I have. So let's move on to, um, our, uh, financial, uh, enrollment.
All right. We're kicking in everyone. Uh, okay, so, uh, uh, you are being presented with March budget status reports. And, um, they are all up to date. The only part, okay, there we go. So budget, um, status report shows that as of March 34 first, we have 54% of our revenues in. And we, um, have 96% of our budgeted expenditures, um, either spent or spoken for through March. Um, our ending fund balance as of March 31st is 1.895 million. Uh, we, um, don't have much coming in for debt service fund and capital projects fund right now is what I meant. Capital projects fund, sorry about that. Um, we will start to see, uh, revenues come in with April, uh, local tax collections, uh, in May. And, um, just going back to what Rob said, uh, watching really closely to see, uh, where the shortfall of levy collections ends up falling as, as in the percentage of, uh, revenue that does not, does not come in in timely manner. And we'll watch that closely because we, we do use our local levy dollars for, um, paying some of our, um, bond issues. Um, ASB, I know there's some, um, special OSPI, um, permissions that are happening with ASB and so that we can close out the year and, um, budget for the new year. So we'll be following some of that direction to, to keep our ASB going the way that it should. Um, I wanted to, um, point out that I did look at our budget status reports from one year ago, the end of March. I was just curious to see where we were. And then I'm going to do this each month now, moving forward, just, um, um, just to kind of compare. Our revenues at 54%, one year ago, they were at 56%. So we're really close and, and right on track. Our expenditures, 96% um, this year at nine, about 91, I guess not, about 97 and 91. Um, and so we know a lot of that is salary and benefit and it's already encumbered and spoken for. And that's what that, um, I think would account for. Uh, we'll be watching our local, uh, levy dollars, uh, May treasures report, um, that comes for our April income will come around May 5th. And it's always around the 5th of the month. So, um, as soon as that comes, then we'll, we'll look at that and, um, try to see where we are. Other than that, I don't have any, anything else.
Sorry, trying to find my cursor. Two screens go on, one behind me, one to the side. Uh, thank you. Uh, any questions, uh, out there? Director Koo?
Thank you. And I, I know the cursor problems. Um, thank you. I like the year-over-year comparison. So that's helpful, Darlene. So thank you for doing that. Um, do you have a sense, I'm trying to, you know, in the new world order that we're in, what threats or potential delays to our, uh, you know, various municipality and, um, you know, public entities, um, are coming? And our funding is, uh, almost entirely property taxes, correct? And if so, do we anticipate any, uh, disruptions to that based on what may or may not be allowed in Clallum County?
Um, I don't, I don't think that there is going to be disruption to it. The disruption is going to be that, um, you know, if, if families can't, you know, make their tax payment in a timely manner, then that's a delay to us. Um, it doesn't mean that we won't get it, but we won't get it in a timely manner. So, um, we're, we're just going to watch that to see if that really has a large impact in our, in our county. And we don't, we just don't know.
Okay, thank you. But, uh, am I correct in that Clallum County has not, uh, formally allowed for somebody to defer their taxes, their property taxes, or did they?
Um, I think that if you, um, is this right, Rob? Did we talk about this where if, if you need to defer them, you, you have to fill out paperwork? It has to, has to be special permission. Only certain, um, instances will that be granted?
And it's a two-month waiver.
Yeah.
Some of the other counties, Kitsap County being one, are just automatically giving taxpayers waivers. You have to apply in Cal- Clallum County and your taxes are due, uh, then, I believe, June 30th.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh, Director Jeffries, anything?
Uh, no, just thank you, Darlene. And I assume like the rest of us, you're in contact with your, um, what is, what's the group? SBO, group around the state. I imagine, um, a lot of them are, um, in the same boat we are and, you know, coming up with, um, good information. good information to help you uh do your job, so, but I really appreciate what you do for us.
All right, thank you. Yes, OSPI does have um some virtual meetings that they, they are doing that every week. And some of those we get to chime in on. And then uh the business managers from around our region, we're also meeting every two weeks. And um that way we can ask a lot of questions and see what other districts are doing. And, and if there's anything that we need to, you know, know that we might have, you know, that OSPI might have uh talked about, they will let us know too.
Yeah, it's really nice to have that support.
Yeah, yes, it is.
All right, great. Uh, Director Stoffer?
Yes, I, I was making sure I could get that mic turned on and the video turned back on. Uh, Darlene, thank you again for your work and uh showing us these numbers. And I'll just um looking at the revenues budgeted there, the state forest lands. And um that is probably uh all that we're going to get this year because there is no more projected sales to occur and uh within our school district uh area. Um, I'll confirm that tomorrow because I'm on a WASDA trust lands meeting. But um that total there of a hundred and nine thousand uh will probably more likely be it for uh this year. But otherwise, uh, thank you again for all your work and uh take good care.
Thank you.
All right, Director Pickens?
Um, the, so the ending fund balance, um, which I think you said is just shy of one, one point nine million, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And if that, so that's where, where it currently is right now?
That's where, as of the end of March, so um just remembering what a leg time there is, you know, between our months. So as of the end of March, it's one point eight nine five. That includes our minimum fund, you know, our minimum fund balance that we want to keep in there um per our policy. And then also um anything that's restricted for uh debt service payment, um, anything that was designated as a capital projects, um, you know, uh project that we were going to do. It's all, it's all in that one point eight nine five.
Okay, and um, do you know, and I'm not sure if this is something that, that um regularly look at. So if you don't know, that's fine. So do you, do you also compare that to where, where, where we are projected to be at the end of the year? Or are we looking, where are we looking at coming at, at the end of this, this school year?
Yeah, um, so we'll just keep watching. Um, and so the budgeted, where we budgeted to be at the end of the school year was one point nine eight um million. And so just remembering that right now, we don't have a, a big in, you know, income of revenue that's coming. And um to see how that all um helps us with our ending fund balas- balance. But yes, starting, well, we have been, but um always when it gets towards the end of the school year, not August, but the, actually, the end of the school year, June, we are um taking really close care to watch um our accounts payable, um anything extra that's coming through payroll. Uh, are there any big projects that still have to be done? Um, things like that, closing all of our open purchase orders that are encumbered that we are done using so that it takes it out of the encumbered column. Yeah, definitely watching to see how close we get. Because if we get too close, then we'll need to do a budget extension and um we'll want to do that sooner rather than later. Uh, because you know, of course, we can't go one cent over what we budgeted for expenditures. Revenues, doesn't matter, but expenditures, it matters.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank, thank you, Darlene, nothing here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, uh, Dr. Clark.
And you might be muted if you're trying to talk.
I'm muted. Thank you, Darlene, thank you, Director Gibson. The first thing I want to talk about is, oh no, we're on the modified educational plan. I was on my report. Do um Director Pickens, you asked me a question, you asked me on, can't tell you if it was Thursday or Friday, about pupil teacher ratio?
Yep.
And I have that, I don't have it K twelve, I only have it for K five, it was too hard. I, I hope to have it for K uh six twelve at a later date. If you look at this spreadsheet, the, on the left, the top bill, or the top tier is Haller, the bottom tier is Gray Wolf. Uh, the columns on the left are currently, that's what our ratios are with the reduced staffing on, and again, using projected enrollment. Using projected enrollment, that's what the uh ratios would be at the K five level. Now, I, I need to qualify this a little bit because to receive at the K three level, we need to hit a K uh pupil teacher ratio of seventeen to one to achieve max funding. All this is here is the, are the classroom teachers. That does not take into consideration the psych, the PE specialist, the SLP and all of that. So I want to be clear that this isn't the full picture, but this is the picture of, you know, uh, the teacher in the classroom, the students in the classroom. And to be, the other point is, I just rolled over the kindergarten numbers to be the exact same. I did not uh estimate kindergarten, I used the same. And I hope I'm wrong, I definitely hope I'm wrong about that because this was one of our smaller kindergarten classes in the past several years in, in both, district-wide. And one of the areas where uh, yeah, we're, we're down about twelve or thirteen students from where we budgeted. So these are, these are the ratios with the projected staffing.
Sorry, I was, thank you for doing it based on the actual classroom as, which is exactly the, the view I wanted, so.
Well, that's what it is to me, we do things differently for funding and I understand that ration, rationale. But that's, that's what it looks like and that's with the enrollment. Do, our March enrollment rolled over, exactly. And you know, could be more, could be less, we don't know.
Correct, thank you.
Um, the second thing is, do we have any more questions on the modified education plan from the workshop?
Superintendent Clark, keep going in to call you Director, Dr. Clark. Um, yeah, just uh, just the same question about um, you know, our attrition and, you know, wanting to wrap our heads around that a little bit more. One clarifying question on this agenda item, does this require board action tonight? Or is this?
It does not require board action tonight, it will require board action. We have a resolution drafted at the next meeting and I'm gonna talk about the next meeting in a few minutes. I do, and I will have Assistant Superintendent Mon did a, a survey, did some legwork on where the student, specifically about where some of our students have gone. It's a little bit old, I, I can't, I want to say she did it in January, but she will, she will talk about that at the next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
A- anything else? I think we covered quite a bit in our uh, in our workshop earlier, so uh, just last opportunity for questions there. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Okay.
Moving on to you.
Let's talk about uh, I want to go, let's go, uh, what are um, go to the evaluation memo, please. One of the things that uh our administrative staff, we are still legally obligated to evaluate all certificated individuals. Um, but the evaluation will look different, it won't necessarily look different, but it is different this year. And it's, it's no different than the grading system or, or it's similar to the grading system we're using for students that it's kind of do no harm. And the majority of the evaluation will be pre-March sixteenth, March seventeenth, excuse me. And uh Vince Ricabini, who was integral in developing the uh TPEP or the Evaluation Process several years ago, when he was the Director of Teaching and Learning, and he and I see Ravel J with SEA because anytime we do anything with teacher evaluation, it has to be approved or consulted with uh um our union, our SEA. And so they uh sat down and got some things ironed out and we're looking, and this is a draft. Assistant Superintendent Mon is looking over because eventually she will be the final approval for this. So she is going over this along with the other principals. So we have to get this on board because again, I still have that legal obligation of evaluation. So that's what it is, I, I hope you had a chance to look at it if you have questions. Uh, I, I, I'm not sure that I can answer them right now, but I can get them answered.
Uh, I, I don't have anything myself.
This is Director Stoffer, no, I don't, but thank you for the report and format, it is, it's very helpful, thank you.
The only um President Gibson, if I, if I may?
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I, my, my guess is that, you know, I think this probably goes without saying, but as, as folks put out certain growth goals and that sort of thing and then school, oh, I think it's covered right there in four, but um that, just, just making sure that we're um, we're, we're honoring of, of situations where um, where teachers couldn't gather that dat- data for whatever reasons.
And I would, I, I would concur, I, I think we're, if we're gonna air, we're gonna air on the side of leniency.
Yeah.
And it might be something that, hey, we, we need to look at this next year for you, Mrs. Jones, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, which is fair. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up?
Well, one of the issues, and this is, this is a back burner issue a little bit, but it's gonna become a front burner issue quicker than we would like in that. This is the last year of, we have to run an EPNO levy next year, next school year. Uh, this year, uh, our levy goes through the calendar year twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Our capital projects levy is over this year in December of twenty. When we ran the capital projects levy, it was a three-year proposition. Our EPNO levy is a, it was a four-year uh uh ballot measure. So uh, could you open that spreadsheet up, please? If you go back to a conversation we had several weeks ago at a live board meeting, we talked about a bond issue, capital projects levy, we had a community forum, I wrote an op-ed, yada, yada, yada. Um, it is my personal opinion now, because of the situation that has uh happened, that it, this is not the time to run a bond issue.
Is now joining.
So um, that's
Is now exiting.
That said, we have no choice but to run the EPO levy. Uh, I think it might benefit us, it, us as well to run a small capital projects levy. And what I mean by a small levy is that it would be a, a two-year, perhaps a three-year. Uh, John Gores with uh Piper Jaffrey made it a four-year. But what I'm suggesting is that we keep the amount the exact same or on, I should say on or around the same because it's tied to our property valuations and to run a capital projects levy alongside the EPNO levy for two, perhaps three years. And that in, in my line of thinking, we'd set out some projects that need to get done and, and we, and this would be multiple projects. We'd have community meetings, virtual or live, to figure out what those projects are and, and we get them done over the two-to-three-year period. One of the big differences, if we do that, is that we won't have to borrow against this money because we will be using the money as we get it. We'll have projects that will, we need to have shovel-ready projects in April, in October. So, and, and we will earmark them for the years done if we decide to run a capital projects levy simply because a lot of that's gonna depend on the economy of Clallum County and the economy of the squim taxpayers. I recognize that completely, but I would also be remiss if I didn't bring up this, this uh, the EPNO levy is a must, can't live without it. We'll talk about that more as the future. I do recognize that the capital projects levy is an option to consider. And one of these is uh, one of these, okay, stay at the top, please, Tracy, I'm sorry. This levy, the tu- the first spreadsheet assumes that we would run the capital projects levy in November. Or for that matter, we could conceivably run it in August. Those are the two ballot measure times, August is too soon, but I do want to tell you. That assumes that where, that way, there would be collections in twenty-one. If you go down to the second one, that assumes that we would not, we would not run the capital projects levy until February of twenty-one. So there would be a year without any collection of taxes for, in, in, in twenty-twenty-one, no capital project levy income. So those are the two options. Again, the amounts that I've chosen or want to start the conversation at are the same or similar to at what we're currently paying. Some of that is limited by the state in regards to how much we can run an EPO, EPNO levy and the same as a capital projects levy. I, I bring these, these numbers in to start the conversation. It will be more difficult to run any type of ballot measure virtually than, but I could use the growth experience, I, I feel comfortable doing it. I had a conversation with uh Marty Brewer earlier today, they have to run an EPNO levy. And so it's all, they passed the capital projects levy this past February, but they have to run an EPNO levy. And it's always nice when your neighbor's running a levy alongside you. I guess I would field questions for many board members in regards to this document.
Uh, thank, thanks, Dr. Clark, I guess um, just one thing in uh, as you were Thanks, Dr. Clark. I guess just one thing in, as you were stating. So if we, if we did the, looked at the capital projects levy and it was broken down by projects. So as opposed to with our last one, we had a big, major project. So we had to borrow against it to get the money upfront to be able to do some of that work. This we could probably string along over a couple, over those couple of years and do it piecemeal.
Exactly. It's exactly what I'm saying. So in other words, if you chose some things like a remodel of the auditorium would cost two, and we prioritize them. So as we add our April tax collection, we would estimate what our April, May tax collection are. And let's just say it's a million dollars. So we need to have a million dollars, the priority of a million dollar, the first million, and we need to update the, upgrade and modernize the auditorium, re-carpet facilities, look at can, safety issues of cameras around the district, various things that we've put off. And I, I seriously just use those as arbitrary examples. We'd have to go greater into detail, but we would spend the money as we got it. We would not borrow against it.
Thank, thank you. That's, that's, that's a huge factor, I think, too, looking at that move down the line. Director Ku, any questions on that?
Uh, no, that was actually the one I had as well, but thank you for bringing this forward, Dr. Clark. This is important and, you know, need to keep, need to keep the wheels turning, not only the EP and O, but I feel very strongly about our facility needs because those aren't going away. And I want to capstone that with gratitude for the roof at the middle school and the fence at Howler and making good use of those quote unquote surplus funds from the last capital projects levy. Those were two demonstrable wins. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Director Jeffries?
Yeah, without going to a whole lot of detail, there's a lot of confusion about EP and O. On the county assessor's side, it's still called M and O. Exactly, could you describe for us, remind us and people that are viewing exactly, without giving a lot of detail, in general, what are those EP and O? Why is it so necessary? What are those funds used for? I thought the state funded this. I know it did. I know they don't, but I asked the question.
In a perfect world, you'd be right. First of all, I want to in, talk about that our EP and O levy educational program and operations is somewhere between 16 and 17% of our budget. What does it fund? It funds, generically speaking, whatever the prototypical model doesn't. And in some cases, that, that is extra teachers. In some case, that, that is athletics. That is a lot of our extra duty contracts, including, you know, some arts programs. It funds additional personnel, additional transportation. It funds non, non-funded special ed situations and so forth and so forth. And you're right, I still call it an M and O levy. That's what I cut my teeth on. And I'm having a difficult time saying EP and O levy. I will, I will have, Darlene is working on a spreadsheet that will show you where we've spent our EP and O levy dollars for this year. But i- in a nutshell, it's everything that quote, basic ed doesn't fund. And I know that's pretty broad.
But in general, without that, that would be a roughly 17%, another 17% reduction in our budget if that doesn't pass. Is that correct?
That would be correct. And, and we would be, we, I'm going to be, we could not function without an EP and O levy. Not anywhere near, you know, you're looking at our budgets 40, between 40 and 41 million. That's between six and seven million. You, you know, I'm not going to tell you we'd have to shut the doors, but awful close.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, the, that new terminology is enrichment levy. So to move from one to another?
Mm-mm.
Yeah. All right, Director Stoffer.
Yes, thank you. Again, on the spreadsheet there, and it is important to start that messaging out there because as Director Jeffries mentioned there about the M and O, people see the M and they think that's maintenance, actual maintenance. And they're asking then why we didn't do maintenance when we had those dollars. So, and yes, it's now called the enrichment or enhancement levy. I'm very supportive of looking at a capital projects levy and keeping the wills per se turn on that. And we have a long list of items going back to 2008 and then 2012 that we can prioritize. A date that we need to keep in mind for our work is for August is when a resolution is, is due to the county auditor to place a proposal resolution on the November ballot. And I'm also very pleased with how we use those remaining funds from our, our last capital project levy. And thank you, Director Ku, for bringing that up. But I believe that was around 170K or, or almost 180. So, you know, we came in under budget and basically on time. And we've demonstrated to our voters and community that we can budget and we can manage a project. So I, I think it is very important that we have a good discussion on placing a capital projects levy on the ballot for November. Though I know there's a whole bunch of other issues out there, but I think it warrants a good workshop discussion, community input. But thank you again.
All right, Director Pickens?
Dr. Clark, thank you for expanding on the, the EP and O levy. Appreciate that. And just a, just a question, although I'm pretty sure I know, know the answer, but one of the things you mentioned is, is special education. And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, so correct me if I'm wrong, because the state uses an arbitrary percentage for what they fund for special education, we have to make up the difference from local funds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And
About that is Oregon's percentage is less.
Okay, so, and as opposed to not, not just cutting all these programs, but in the realm of special education, we, they use our services that we're legally obligated to provide, correct?
Yes.
So there's more, it's more than just about cutting massive cuts to program. That's, that's a liability within itself. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. All right. And I'm pretty sure I knew the answer to that. Just, just another, another point of how critical this is.
Well, and I'll just say, you know, you have 12 school districts in this state that failed their February EP and O levy and are not going to be able to rerun in April. And so just picture what the, if you look up Centralia, North Mason, see what their budget cuts look like because they, they have to wait till August to rerun. Typically, when districts have failed in February, they are able to rerun in April. These, those districts are not going to be able to rerun until August.
Yeah, yeah, kind of. All right. Well, thank you for, for, for making sure it's a priority and we're keeping our eye on it. And then we'll look forward to, to supporting that however we can.
Okay, thank you. And I think I said what I needed earlier. Thanks for all the questions, guys. Anything else to present there, Dr. Clark?
Well, just my report. I have just some things that you want to touch base with you on. First of all, we've been getting, we hired or moved Megan Like, our new PIO. She's been the PIO for a couple, three months. All the, most of the literature, the public relations you've seen out of her or out of our office has been from her. She's going to be sidelined for a couple of weeks. She had a baby yesterday. So congratulations to Megan. We're still waiting for, on graduation. No decision has been made one way or the other. Waiting to see if Governor, you know, where Governor Inslee is going to be at as he expands or alters the May 4th, stay home, stay healthy. He's opened a couple of avenues with construction and, construction today, fishing next week. So waiting on that. Talked about the levy. I will also say that May 4th at midnight, the, the abbreviated OPMA guidelines go revert back to the technical ones. So just to be aware of that, I'm going to bring that up here in a second. One of the things that you all at some point in time need to talk about, speaking of teacher evaluations, is if you want to evaluate me or not, or tell me what you want me to start doing and anything, I'm open to anything. But that probably is a situation you need to talk about amongst yourselves. The other thing is, and I just going to, and I'm not going to dwell on this because this isn't customary and usual. I have had a request from the Alumni Association to name the football field. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. They have some money and it's going to be a conversation when we can all meet together. But I, I, I want you to be aware of that. And then the last thing that I would like, and I, and I don't know what the correct procedure is on this, how we do that, but Director Gibson, if we change the May 4th meeting to May 11th, does, does that take a motion?
That's a good question. I don't, I mean, we, we moved our schedule around the last time.
If you need a motion, I'm happy to give it for the reasons mentioned.
I mean, I, I think, I think it would work. Yeah, that would probably be
Let me expand that. So we would meet May 11th. That way we'll have more information. And then May 11th, and then would that be May 25th? Is that Memorial Day?
That, that's Memorial Day weekend, yeah.
Then we'd go, I, I am asking to move the board meetings to May 11th and May 26th.
A move as requested.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second any discussion on that? Hearing none. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Same sign? All right, great. And thank you for that. That does give us a little more time to, you know, whittle down those numbers to, before we make that final decision.
And I guess the only thing that we have left in the agenda, is there any COVID, any issues that you need me to bring up to the staff? Or we need to talk amongst ourselves?
Nothing that I can think of. I just, I think we're doing a, you know, a good job as a whole as a district in trying to, you know, make sure, at least in the situation, we are educate our, our kids and keep them active and engaged and moving forward. And, you know, and our decisions on grading in high school and all of that. And, you know, we'll see what the governor has in store with us here in the near future to determine, you know, what our next steps are as far as our meetings and as far as, you know, whether we can gather together and all. I don't have anything, anybody else with any questions or any thoughts?
Just, Dr. Clark, I'm just curious. Have you seen since the release of the information about the new grading guidelines? Has that negatively impacted, you know, student engagement in any way that you've, that you've been, that you're aware of?
On a very small, I don't know how large, in my conversations with Sean Langston, I know that that has raised the apprehension level of a, he spoke about specifically about a couple of students. I, and I don't know if it's more than that, but he, he spoke directly to me about two students who were extremely strong students and it, and are, their stress level has gone up.
Okay.
This is Director Stoffer.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is the, the date June 5th as, is that out there for as the graduation day? Or is that farther out? And then looking to see if there will be another senior parent conversation scheduled sometime up. And if we could work to get more parents, families on that calls. I know we had somewhere around 90 total on the call, but let's, that's probably counting us and some staff. We're probably looking at about 70 actual parents. And so we'd like to see a stronger outreach, if possible, to get more on those calls. Thank you.
A couple of things. The date, June 5th, we will not have graduation that day. That said, I know at the senior parent night, we talked about doing something symbolically. I, just generically, symbolically to honor that day. We, we, and by we, I mean, the high school administration and myself are dragging our feet on our next senior parent meeting, waiting to see what Governor Inslee does. So that is, hopefully that answers your question. I would think that we would have a meeting sometime next week, not this week.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. It's just some of the rumblings I hear out there. And again, I refer people to email the Principal Langston staff at the high school for that. And, but at some reason, the fifth stuck in my mind. I just wanted to make sure it was clear for me to. So thank you again.
Okay, thanks.
Last, last two comments. More dates. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. We got some banners and we're doing some things on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Megan did though, got some things going before. And FFA plant sale drive-through, May 6th to May 9th.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, anything for the good of the order? If not, then we'll adjourn the meeting. And thanks, everyone, for your attendance. Thanks for those that came tonight and stuck it out and time to eat.
There we go.
All right.
All right. Thank you all.
Night.
Thank you, everybody.